Good evening, everyone. The hour being six o'clock. I'm going to start this public hearing. I'm not going to open the public hearing yet for comments, but we'll call the meeting to order. I'm going to be recording this meeting.
This conference will now be recorded.
And I'm going to start by letting everybody know pursuant to Governor Baker's March 12th, 2020 order suspending certain provisions of the open meeting law of general law, Chapter 30A, Section 14, the governor's March 15th, 2020 order opposing strict limitation on the number of people that may gather in one place. This public hearing, for the purposes of our cable license renewal, is being conducted by a remote participation only. No in-person attendance of members of the public will be permitted, but every effort will be made to ensure that the public can adequately access proceedings as provided for in the order. A reminder that persons who would like to view this meeting while in progress may do so by watching Southbridge Cable Access Channel 192 or by the remote information provided in the notice. And we will post a recording of this meeting on the town's website as soon as we are able. Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. My name is Michael McCall. I am the town manager here in Southbridge. And what we commence doing is we will, we have to go through some basic formalities before we can start the hearing and have to read a copy of the hearing notice. If you will indulge me for one moment while I get the hearing notice up. One moment. I had it here. Pursuant to the requirements of the public hearing for this cable television license, I will now read in the copy of the hearing notice. The Southbridge Notice of Cable Television Public Hearing. Please take notice that the town manager of the town of Southbridge, Massachusetts, is issuing authority for cable licenses pursuant to Mass. General Law, Chapter 166A, will hold a public hearing on March 25th, 2021 at 6:00 p.m. The public hearing will be held by remote access only. Please refer to the town's website for remote participation information and login. For the purpose of the public hearing, it will be to determine whether to issue cable television license to Charter Communications. All applications, reports, statements, and license drafts to be considered at the public hearing that constitute public records under the state law are available by email to the town manager's office through Yvonne Tortis. Members of the public are invited to attend by remote access and to be heard on the topics, including A, whether the cable operator is in full compliance with its currently existing cable license, and B, what are the town's future cable-related needs? Any person wishing to speak will be given an opportunity to be heard. Please see the go-to-meeting ID listed in the notice for call-in information to participate. So also, for the record, I have to, including myself, the town manager, I know that we have members of our cable TV staff, Jim Cosgrove, the station manager, Max Gullitson, who is on that staff, and we have a member of our cable advisory committee, this Denise Clements, is on the line. We also have to go over some of the formalities which constitute the bounds in the scope of this particular meeting, which been laid out. It's essentially an executive summary of the bounds set under the U.S. Code for the FCC, U.S. Code 47, Section 521, as well as Mass. General Law's Chapter 166A. That we will be going forward this evening under the federal statute to look at the structural framework requiring a license to deliver cable services and the procedure for granting that. And the local statute that governs the licensing procedures is Chapter 166, which provides for the issuance of such licenses in the 10-year renewal of licenses. The rationale behind this, the Federal Cable Act was put in place to ensure that there was not a monopoly over the cable market and that compensation would be provided to communities affected by the impending cable monopoly, which provides us with our PEG access, which is public access education and governmental channels. As part of the bounds, what we are not getting in a license renewal is essentially a new cable company. There is a presumption of renewal, much like a liquor license, that cable companies, provided they are meeting the criteria, should not be denied a license renewal. With regard to programming changes, the FCC has said that an issuing authority cannot negotiate for specific programming in exchange for the granting of a license. Coverage of specific over-the-air markets, FCC regulations in response to pressure from local TV stations have long required cable offers to refire their basic cable provider subscribers over the air channel. However, it has to be from the closest large market, not necessarily a preferred local market. Rates are regulated by the Department of Telecommunications here in the Commonwealth, so we will not be talking the scope with regard to rate reductions. Technical obligations, this is governed by FCC rules and the issuing authority may not require specific equipment or technical requirements or improvements in exchange for granting a license. There is a prohibition against the cable operator from passing through costs to the subscriber or surcharge. Cable companies are allowed to pass directly through to subscriber, all costs arising from the obligations imposed upon them in the license. This includes not just the PEG programming supports cash payments, but also required plant construction maintenance of costs for INETS and all PEG access lines equipped. An obligation to provide cable service to every household within the municipality. A line extension obligations are generally negotiable, but the increased costs must be reasonable. What we can get from a license renewal, we can get cash to support our local PEG programming, and the cable companies can pay up to 5% of its gross annual revenues for the purpose of supporting Southbridge PEG operating costs and reasonable future capital costs. Construction and upgrading of PEG lines in additions or upgrades to local or origination sites, studio configurations, et cetera. Some limited technology upgrades, such as HD channels for PEG services, are within the scope. Certain discounts may be available to seniors, and that could be a subject of negotiations. License compliance and enforcement tools, such as requirements for public hearings reports and liquidated challenges for repeated failures, can be addressed as well. Cable licenses is a comprehensively regulated field, and what we can do, limited to the scope that is set forth by the FCC and alluded to in the summary that I just provided you. And so, based on that, we will then proceed with the other elements of the hearing this evening. I have been previously submitted a budget and a recommendation for capital by the committee. And we're looking at an ascertainment of needs, the budget in the capital plan provided by Southbridge Cable Television. With regards to the ascertainment established for the future needs, we're looking at an annual budget of approximately $230,000 averaged out over a 10-year term. We are looking to increase this amount by raising the amount of money of gross annual revenues, hoping to bring this up to a higher dollar amount. We are also looking to increase our capital. We have been provided a budget, as I said, in operating a capital requirement that will go over a span of 10 years to include a number of capital items for the maintenance of our station, as well as providing the access to programming that has been supplied by Cable, Southbridge Cable Television, over the last 10 years, as well as making improvements to our local origination sites, as well as here in Town Hall to cover all meetings, to provide the necessary public programming, educational, and governmental access as outlined in our contract. What I would like to do at this moment in time, I would like to share a video with all those on the line, which has been prepared by Southbridge Cable Television, which showcases the types and frequency and the amounts of the cable programming that they have delivered over the years and that they wish to continue to provide this level of programming and increase that, which supports the needs that we are looking for in the increase in our operating budgets, as well as the upgrades to the equipment to continue to provide the necessary public, educational, and governmental program. And at this point in time, I will start the the video. And if it doesn't start up with the audio, please, somebody let me know.
Hi, Southbridge. This is Max Gullitson, and I'm here at Southbridge Community Television at 41 Elm Street, the site of so many shows that me and my friends here have produced for the town. Now, starting with the town council meetings, which are very important way for you to get info on local stuff. And we produce those. We produce them during the COVID on the remote meetings that we're all so used to seeing now. And prior to that, we had them live here in the council chambers, and we're hoping to get back to that soon. But it's so much more than the town council meetings that we produce here. We have, in this studio right here, we've had several guests that we've talked to about things that are interesting to you, the citizens of Southbridge. Why don't we take a look back on some of the ones that we produced here in our studio? Many of you regular Southbridge viewers have watched as we interviewed our local head librarian, Margaret Morrissey, on the mini-goings-on at the Southbridge Library. More on those in a minute. It's great to have Margaret in to promote the musicians and others who do programs at the library, just like it's good having the Southbridge Gateway Players Theater Group come in and describe upcoming plays, like when they came in to promote the Savannah Sipping Society and other plays they produce locally. And in addition to our local library and the theater group, we've had other great shows right here in the studio. We talked to Anna about recycling, and we talked to Judy about the Southbridge Autumn Fest. There was the time Renata stopped by to inform us all about the farmer's market down in the Globe every Saturday during the summer and the parking lot of Big Bunny Market. How about the time Freeman came by the studio to show his mural depicting the hurricanes in Puerto Rico? And Larry Day comes in and spins a few records from back in the day, you know, when there were records. We also help others do shows here in our studio. We have chairman chats where Jack talks to people about issues concerning them so that the viewers on Charter Spectrum can stay up to date on community issues. And it's not just interviews. John McHugh and his friends on America's Front Porch like to come in and regale us with songs from Rustic America and other genres of stringed music. One time, Mike Marquetti brought in a mystery guest, and it turned out to be Representative Richard Neal, who gave great insight into the federal government exclusively to viewers of Channel 194 right here in Southbridge. But as much fun as it is to produce shows right here in our studio, taking it out there, you know, out of the building, is where we really get to mix it up with our community of Southbridge. Why don't we take a look back at some of the shows that we produced here in our town for the people of Southbridge? We've done shows about races along Everett Street and people all cheering the runners they meet. We film Earth Day events where, from what we can glean, is a gathering of folks who make the town clean. The signs around town we've turned into a show. And Christmas in Southbridge with Santa, ho, ho! With plays on the Common, a theatrical treat, and handball courts for players to meet. There are shows about sock hops at the senior center and yoga with Jasmine to make you feel better. The fire department had their open house. Bring your children, bring your spouse. And for another more solemn occasion, we remember Twin Towers at our fire station. To the town's reservoir, we went filming one time, and they showed us clean water, not mud and not slime. We talked to a fellow, an Eagle Scout, whose final project he told us about. We had wanderings with Mara and a Latin art exhibit. The pictures of our town are many, more than just a snippet. The time we filmed the recycling station and learned about trash and recycles. The Cops and Kids Program did a summertime show with kids eating burgers and slipping. And so, friends, can we talk about music for a minute? Because that's something we here at Southbridge Community Television really like to film. How about the concerts at the Common? Do you remember the Island Castaways band? Or how about Pabon Salsa bringing in the Summer Night? Scud Farkas stopped by, and we were there to film it. And if you like music, how about the numerous musical guests that perform at our library? Were you there for Banjo Blue? We were for a show of Americana that we brought to our local viewers. How about Dale LaPage and Friends? Great entertainment for not only the library crowd, but also those who watched it on Channel 194. The library was also the site of so many other programs we produced here. There was a show about the Butler Collection, a collection of photos of African-Americans in Worcester at the turn of the 20th century. We filmed Dino Teta giving a discussion about NASA with interesting facts pertaining to. We learned all about the Hoyt running chairs and the famous Hoyt family who run marathons. These are just a handful of the shows that we've been able to film at our local library. Then there are the times we get way out, like when Maureen and I hiked for a few days and took pictures, and that became a show. Folks, we've done a number of things here in our studio and in our community than the way of promoting our town through video. I'd like to take this moment to thank Charter Spectrum and the Southbridge Town Council, and particularly the people of Southbridge, who have been the greatest fans and our greatest critics and our greatest recommenders of new shows on things that we should be doing. Thank you. Thank you to all of you. Southbridge is a great town, honest town, as you know if you've been here for a while. So to Charter Spectrum and to the Southbridge Town Council, and especially to our friends in Southbridge, all up and down our beautiful little dale here. Thank you very much for watching Southbridge Community Television, and it is our earnest hope to keep bringing you more shows into the future. This is Max Gullitson, on behalf of Jim and Mark and Bill, signing off from Southbridge Community Television.
First of all, I want to thank Max, Jim, Bill, and Andy for the wonderful synopsis, the summary of the program they've done. It was very well put together. Before I open up for a public comment, I, just for the record, I have a copy of the operating budget that was submitted by Mr. Cosgrove, outlining for the next three operating years to give an idea of the need for fiscal years 2022. They're looking for $237,000 fiscal 2023, $241,000 in fiscal year 2024, $246,000 for their operating budgets. And I have received a 10-year capital plan from them to make improvements, including the municipal meeting room, the master control room, a portable remote station, a studio, and control room improvements, six field cameras, studio lighting, additional chamber cameras, fiber transport equipment, and editing stations, in a total of $214,000. At this point, I will be opening it up for public comment. Before I do so, I'm going to ask each person to state their names so that I can document who's speaking. This is your opportunity to be heard on your concerns relative to the cable TV license renewal for Charter Communications. I did receive one email that was passed through that went to Southbridge Community Television. That came from a John Swenson, and I'm going to read that first, and then we'll open it up for anybody on the line. So this was dated March 23rd. It was an email that came in that was forwarded to Denise Clements, who's on the cable advisory committee, as well as me. And it was passed through by Jim Cosgrove. My name is John Swenson. I lived in Southbridge on Country Club Place for almost 25 years. I've spent a little time on various boards in town, town council, Board of Assessors, and Traffic Commission. I think the most important thing about cable access is having a choice. Currently, Spectrum is our only option. As with any business, when a company has no competition, there is less emphasis on quality. We have ongoing issues with Spectrum. We have three televisions with cable, and at least once a week, I have to reset one of them. Getting a new box used to be easy, but as you know, the Southbridge office and Webster office have been closed. This goes back to my point about customer service. Another issue is internet speed. As I send this email, our download is 54 megabits per second. This is using a modem and a router provided by Spectrum. When the internet was added with Spectrum equipment, it was over 100. I have to add repeaters and extenders to get the internet throughout the house. Another issue related to customer service is one of the installers who was at our house recently, is there are better cable boxes available, but only to new customers, not existing. Interestingly, it has been technicians from Spectrum who have told me that the town should get a better provider. Thanks again for the opportunity to share my views, John Swenson. So at this point, it is now, I'll turn the public hearing over to public comments from the nurses on, or the citizens that are online. If you wish to speak, please raise your hand, and then I'm recognizing Helen Boyle first. She has raised her hand. Ms. Boyle, if you would unmute yourself, if you can't, let me know. And feel free to comment. This is being recorded again. And I did not see anybody here from, listed as being from Charter, but they do have an opportunity to speak, and I know that they have, as part of the requirement, they have someone taking notes or a stenographer on the line. So with that, Ms. Boyle, you have the floor.
Okay, I've lived in Southbridge probably about eight years now, and I've had nothing but issues with Charter Spectrum, anything. When they had the streaming app and that was supposed to be the best, I had every ever code no to man that they had. I have two notebooks full of constantly calling them, trying to reset it, redo everything. I'm down to Wi-Fi, and that's it with them. It's $69 a month for something that doesn't work. It's constantly lagging. It's kicking out. When my son is remote learning, it'll tell you internet is unstable. We've had, in the last year, I have had 10 technicians here in my home to replace modems, routers, rewire from the pole to the house, from the house, just redoing wires, constantly trying to figure it out. And the last technician I had here said, Charter has not updated their wiring in many years, and that's the issue. With everything that's going on and all the technology that is now coming into the homes, they are not upkeeping. My opinion, Charter is too big for their britches. They've bought too many cable, small cable companies, and Southbridge needs to have a choice. This is all over Facebook. It's constantly, every day, someone saying, anybody having issues with this streaming? It's a constant, everyday battle. I can call Charter three times a day with my streaming, with my Wi-Fi issue. Something needs to be done. And I thank you for being able to voice my opinion.
Thank you for your input, Ms. Boyle. Is there anyone else that wishes to speak this evening? Mr. Marquetti, who is also a town councillor here in the community, so I'll note you. Mr. Marquetti, you have the floor, Councilor Marquetti.
Thank you, Mr. Town Manager. My name is Mike Marquetti, and I'm also a Southbridge resident. I just have a few things. Where I live, all of our cables are buried underground, and I don't really have a lot of problems with Charter. But I mean, I know there are a lot of people who do have problems with Charter. I get a lot of calls and comments about it. I don't know if there's a way that Charter can upgrade their wiring and bury some of the wiring underground, because that's, in my own opinion, that seems to be one of the problems that the cables are on the pole. The other thing that I've done is I've connected my computer directly to the modem using a fire wire, or I mean, a cable wire, and that has eliminated some of the lag time that I've had with my with my computer. My wife's computer is in another room, and she does have some slag times with connections. Yeah, the questions that I, some of the questions I have is, first of all, PEG, the PEG channels, public, government, and school. Right now, we don't have a school channel. I'm looking at it right now, and it's completely black. And it's been that way for a long time. And once in a while, it comes on, but for the most part, it's black. Now, I have raised the issue before why we are paying for this channel, why we're not getting that channel. And it's been a while, but I think the answers were something to do with the technician at the school. I mean, Jim can correct me if I'm wrong, but I thought it had something to do with the connection at the school or someone at the school trying to work on it. So that was one of my issues, is that we're paying for the educational channel, but we don't get the educational channel, and it's been that way for several years now. The other thing is the senior discount. I've never been able to get a senior discount, and I certainly am a senior. So I don't know how that works. How do you get the senior discount? And can that be increased? Because for me, in my opinion, 10% isn't very much. And I noticed that some of the other cable companies are offering discounts for low-income people too, which I don't think Charter offers any discounts for low income. So that's another thing that I wouldn't mind seeing us explore in the contract. One of the complaints that I hear, and I'm not too happy about it either, is that they moved their office out of town. I think we should try to get their office back into town. It's very inconvenient to have to go all the way to Worcester when you want to exchange a box. And then, also, I know that in a contract that we have now, there was supposed to be an advance notice if there was a rate increase, but I don't believe we've ever received an advance notice of a rate increase. I've never seen one. You just get your bill, and the next thing you know, you got a rate increase. But the last thing I wanted to ask, and I don't know what the answer, well, I'm sure you have an answer for this, is can we look at another cable company such as Comcast? So that's all I have for now. Thank you.
Thank you for your input, Councilor Marquetti. I've seen Ms. Clements has her mic unmuted. Do you want to weigh in, Ms. Clements?
If I could, thank you, Mr. McCall. So there's a lot of good comments, Councilor Marquetti, that a lot of people have stated for a long time. I've been researching this contract for a couple of months now, reading, reading. As far as the 10%, that was the easy one. Unfortunately, it's 10% off basic. If you're only having basic service, there is a 10% senior discount. Of course, you have to send them all the information and prove that you're the senior and all that, but it is in the contract that is the 10% discount. But again, only on basic service. So to me, like you, I believe that's just not a very good benefit. There are numerous benefits that they say they give us, but I don't feel just like you. As far as, I mean, we talk about looking at other providers and the problem we have. We have not, this is not an exclusive contract. None of the contracts can be exclusive. It's open to other franchises coming in. However, the problem you have is Spectrum Charter is entrenched here in Southbridge. You know, they have the infrastructure. We are outside of, you know, any large shitty Beltway scenarios, and so therefore... And so therefore, it's just less, even though FCC and all the rules they've made to supposedly leave it open to other, um, entities to come in, so there aren't monopolies. All that's done really, in my opinion, from what I've researched, it, it kind of hurts the towns from not being able to piggyback internet service and, and phone service for fees and such to the community. We get nothing for those. And I feel for all the internet issues that are going on, I have the same problem. You're right, lines should be replaced, that is the biggest concern, um, that technically they have a responsibility in our contract to provide adequate service. And it needs to, it needs to be, it needs to meet or exceed expectations, which is written in our contract. And yet, again, that doesn't happen. Now, if I may, I'm going to address, we hear, you know, somebody like Mrs. Boyle and her con, and her comments about how many times she has had people and how many complaints to Charter. The problem we have is the lack of oversight for compliance from the town side to find out about what you're telling us, Mrs. Boyle. Things need to be put in writing on a regular basis. And so that the town knows and Charter has it in writing, and that way, after eight complaints, when something's not resolved, we can take it upon ourselves and they have to, they have to comply and, and have a senior engineer review the situation and get back to us within twenty-one days. That's part of, I believe it's section twelve point seven of the Charter, I mean, of the license. So there are compliance, there are measures for us to take as a community to make sure they're complying. But if we don't keep track of that, which is something I'm hoping to, we can put something into place. I've got some ideas on that personally. Um, there just hasn't been a lot of oversight in the last ten years, or I would say almost any. While people do complain, they complain to the Cable Access Station itself, so they might call the Town Hall and complain to our town managers. We, it appears that little has been done to make them comply with those complaints. So there is a process, it's in our contract. I hope to get those types of information out to more people. I would like people to understand that, again, eight written complaints, either written or emailed to the issuing authority, so that'd be the town manager's office, who might send it over, say, to Cable Access or the C I, the C I, I mean, the C I C, such as myself. Or direct, um, or direct, again, complaints, written or emails to the licensee, which is Charter Spectrum. So then within thirty, twenty-one days, the I A, you know, the I A is going to notify that we've gotten these complaints. And we can make them, you know, tell us what's going on, and, and so therefore, there's a record of it. Unfortunately, we probably have nothing but Facebook records at this point. And that's not something, except for the Mr. Swenson, that's one, uh, who sent in his complaint, that's great. There's, you know, um, going forward, there are a lot of things in this contract that we need to make sure that they comply with. Um, there are reports, they're supposed to send us reports regarding complaints, how many complaints they get per quarter, per year. Um, we can request those, I have requested those from the town manager. There are four different versions of, of the types of reports that they, according to this contract, have the obligation to give to us. And I, for the life of me, I, people can't seem to find them or know if we've ever gotten them. And they are required, they're required through, um, the FCC for these licensees to give the, um, issuing authority, the franchisee, which is Southbridge, these reports on complaints and how they fix them. And, you know, there's, there's a number of things that they're supposed to report to us on. So I intend to follow through with that. But anyway, okay, so that's, that's just a lot of stuff that I've learned. Um, I do hope the contract, the old contract, it is available to people. You have to, they could probably email it to you if you wanted, which would be the cheap way to get it. Um, or perhaps it should be scanned and put online. I think it's, it's great reading, and unfortunately, it has not been read enough. Um, we have town manager who is really working hard at, uh, making this work for us. We're very late on this license renewal game, um, doing the best we can. And that's why we're here tonight, to get your, your input, so that we have more meat, um, skin, whatever, going into the, the actual renewal. If there is, you know, um, if they haven't complied, we don't have to sign a license renewal. We can make them comply with certain things before we sign that license renewal. It's part of the contract. All right, I'll, I'll get off, and maybe there's something else that'll come up.
Thank you, Ms. Clemens. Uh, I, I did send a request to Carter, Charter Communications about the various forums, uh, two-hundred, four-hundred, five-hundred. They said the four-hundred and five-hundred will be forthcoming. They did send something out in March, and I did get something with the total number of subscribers. Um, totally three thousand nine hundred and ninety-eight are our subscribers.
Perfect, thank you for that.
So we will, we will continue to follow up. I see that, uh, Jim Cosgrove, our station, um, manager has his hand up. So Jim, you want to comment?
Yes, I was just going to reply to what Michael mentioned on the edu- education channel. They are working on that, but, um, you know, Ted Mather, who's the instructor over there, said in, in a couple of months past, I guess some of the IT folks who are working, would be helping him, have been tied up with the, uh, distribution of the, uh, pads to the, to the students. So that took a lot of their time. And then recently, he's had some other problems where they've, the IT folks were busy with getting some of the younger students of, back into class. So they're distributing tablets, so working on the tablets. At this, so they are working on it, but as I said, they've had a few setbacks. In fact, recently, I wanted to tell Denise Terra, he's out, he's, he had, uh, he's going to be out for the next three weeks, Mr. Mather. And as I said, he's the, uh, IT, IT slash television instructor at the high school. So he's going to be out for a couple of weeks now, but hopefully after this, you know, he'll be back and we'll get that up to speed. When he was visiting me recently, he borrowed some equipment to work on the channel. He told me he would like to utilize, utilize that, cause some of the students only can see something, you know, utilize that for classes or distance learning or something like that. So he's had a few setbacks, but they are working on that channel, Mike, Michael. So hopefully from here on in, once he comes back, we can close in on borrowing any other setbacks.
Okay, thank you, Jim. Was there anybody else who would like to express, uh, their opinion? Let me go to, uh, Councilor Gus Stevens first, and then I'll come back to Ms. Boyle.
Uh, thank you. And I had one quick, quite, well, two quick questions, actually. One is, can we require a local payment, uh, equipment co- collection kind of facility that doesn't necessarily have to be an office? But maybe have them visit Town Hall, say, once a week or something on a regular basis? So that we can, so that people who are in town can still provide, they can still provide, get the same kind of service they were getting without necessarily having, have an office here? Cause as I understand it, um, the law says that they no longer, they're, they're not required to have offices in easy access, and they should. And I don't know if that, if that's a contract, I'd rather have an office, but, I mean, if they could be meeting in some common public location where we can meet them, that would be, I think, satisfactory. Um, and the other question I had is, I don't actually have Charter cable. Does, does the contract also affect, how much does the contract affect what we can do with internet service? And some, that was brought up by somebody earlier. Um, and, but I, I think almost everybody in town also has Charter internet, and many of us also have Charter phone, as somebody else mentioned earlier. Um, and I think that that's, uh, part of the issue is that we need to have, be able to make sure that we have good service for, for all of those services, not just cable, because a lot of us, a lot of us don't have cable. I haven't had cable in many years, and quite frankly, I have no interest in cable. And is there any way we can work out a deal as part of our negotiations to reduce the cost for people who don't have some of these other services? Because I know our bill for, for just, um, internet and phone service keeps going up. It's now higher than it was when we originally dropped our cable, TV service. Which is not, doesn't sound like a good business practice to me. Thanks, that's all I had at the moment.
Okay. Thank you very much, Councilor Steves. Um, I'll go back, I, I saw Miss Shay had her hand up, but let me go back to Ms. Boyle, who I think wanted to add.
Thank you, thank you, Ms. Shay. Uh, Denise Clemens, so we have to put it in writing when we have a complaint? This is the first time I've ever heard of it.
Well, if you, if you want the licensing authority, the town, to know that there is a problem, your best thing would be to copy both Spectrum and the license. You can also FCC on their website, because FCC, you have the, the Massachusetts Telecommunications and Telecommunications and Cable Department. That is in Boston. But you have the FCC, who is the overall seer of cable transmission and such. And they have a, turns out they have the media department portion too, as I phoned them and had a conversation about define, um, process that they had in our contract. Anyway, regardless, you, if you, um, document, you know, documenting your complaints, and if it's coming around, in your case, you've told us it's been a year of the same complaint. You know, lack of service in one way, shape, or another, then we're able to act on your behalf, you know, and say, hey, what's going on? Now, what will we be told? That the lines aren't good? Well, is that acceptable for this community to have bad lines because they're, they're chipping out, not putting, um, new, new lines down? You know, they're, they're not adding better infrastructure so that everybody has good signal for their cable TV, which freezes up, as you know, and it happens to me, my daughter complained for a whole weekend, saying she was completely out of all three services. Um, so it happens, you know, and you go on, their own news station the other night was, no, that channel is no longer available. You know, I mean, it, it happens on a regular basis. I don't think that's meeting expectation, never mind exceeding it. So, but those are things that, um, there is a process, I can, you know, it's in the contract. Certainly, it's easily accessible to anybody who wants to see it. But even we, as a, as the town, as the town manager, as the issuing authority, we all need to be aware of what our job is, what our position is to have to, um, you know, make compliance, make Charter Spectrum comply with what they've signed. And it hasn't changed, by the way, I went back, uh, to contracts. So I went back to two thousand and one's contract, which got done when Chris Clark was here, went back to nineteen eighty. The other one I was given, I think it was like nineteen eighty-four, like one of the original types. It's the same language for complaints and different things, things haven't changed. We just really never reinforced, we never enforced that. I'm hoping there'll be a few other people who want to be on C I, the C I C and, and be part of the oversight, which would be great. Cause we don't, you know, clearly, it's not, you know, the town manager, I mean, this isn't the only contract he has to deal with. Obviously, there's plenty of other things in town, but this is something that is, there's a performance review. You could ask for a performance review once a year, give them a sixty-day notice, and you can literally have a hearing just like this, hopefully in person next time, where they have to come. They have to send somebody, not a stenographer, but they have to send somebody. And the public can come and can ask questions to them. It's a performance evaluation, um, that's in the contract. I've never seen that done. I would like to see that done, and I would expect to enforce that in the coming year. So, again, it, it's, it's, it's not good what we hear right here. Um, hopefully they're listening. And again, lack of competition just kind of blows it out for us, unfortunately. They will tell you there is, of course, Verizon internet, which is, you know, a lot of people have issues with that. And then there is, there's one other one, so there is some choice, but it's, it's not, the speeds and such are not, yeah. So that's the only thing we have then is, but again, this is about a license for, uh, cable television. But yet, they piggyback their services on our license, so, and FCC allows that without, without compensation, so to speak.
Well, in order for people to use, not just, I, I, like I said, I used a streaming app, they offer a streaming app. That's internet, that's not cable. There's a difference, and they're, they're doing something right there, that it's, it's a streaming app. And they're trying to phase out cable boxes. But I've also come across, um, fifty-fifty customer service. I've been told I'm stupid, I don't know what I'm doing. I've had, I've gone to Charter's corporate office and complained to them, seriously complained to them, and nothing was done. It's, it's just, nothing has ever been fixed.
So you give them your name and information, correct?
I give my name, my information, my account number and everything when I call. There is a record on Charter for every time I've called.
They are supposed to keep our records for two years on complaints. So that complaint form that we've asked for, Mr. Mr. McCall, something should be on there for a lot of Mrs. Boyle's complaints. Even though we didn't get them, we should be able to see your complaints. And if not, then something's wrong, and that will be reported to FCC. I mark my words on that one. Because if I find there's a report and there's nothing on there for you or your address, there's something that's wrong. So, just saying. I think we do need to, we do need going forward to make sure that they have some type of a plan. What is their, their schedule, their replacement line schedule, their maintenance schedule? What is Spectrum's long-range plan? In the next ten years being here, we should ask that question before we sign a license. What is their long-range plan to increase services? Cable services, obviously, but, you know, with the benefit, of course, when you increase, when you change the lines, it helps the internet side of it too. But I'm just saying, that's something that, um, seriously has to be asked before, regardless, we sign a contract, so. Okay.
Thank you. Um, Ms. Shay?
I just was listening to you talk about the, uh, school channel. Um, does the town, does the school department get any money from the cable services for the, um, school? Or is it just that they're allowed to plug into it?
So we, we get money based on the, the number of subscribers in our ascertainment of needs. They do pay us a fee based on the number of subscribers. But then, um, they're required to contribute for the public access, educational access, and governmental channels. And we get the money for the operating budget as well as the, the capital. So the, the only budget that I've seen is the one that comes through Southbridge Community Television. Uh, there are techs over there, as far as I know, that, school that can administer it. But we have, all of that money comes into Southbridge Cable to set up the infrastructure that we have here, and they organize the programming. Uh, but that is my understanding how the money comes through. But the money and the money for the capital is to support those three endeavors. And I'm not sure if Max or you or Jim has any other comment, but, um, that is how we get the money for the, the various three channels. Uh, the programming may be up to the school to, to put together. I know Southbridge Community Television handles a lot of the public, as well as the governmental, um, programming and the production. Um, and that, that's the extent that I can answer your question, Ms. Shay.
It certainly seems that we should be getting at least equipment directly to the school system. Um, yeah, I don't want to take anything away from the town side, but, uh, as chairman of the school committee, you know, I'm always going to, uh, say the school should be getting more supplies, more materials, more help.
All right, I can look into, uh, Max has his hand up, let, let's hear from Max. Uh, we can inquire, um, Max, maybe you can shed some light here.
Hi, Mrs. Shay, thanks for weighing in, uh, it's good to see you in the era of COVID. Um, as far as the, um, providing for the school, with the ten-year contract, the one we're currently under, we got two hundred thousand dollar, um, that was earmarked for capital purchases. It was a one hundred thousand dollar payment upfront, and it was one hundred thousand more halfway through. So we received two forms of payment. We received the capital amount as part of the contract, and we're asking for that again this time. And we also received a percentage, as Mr. McCall alluded to. Um, last year, our last contract, the school in fact did, we, we, um, allotted around sixty thousand dollars to the school. And the, uh, this was about seven or eight years ago, I was actually on the, uh, Cable Advisory Committee then. Um, I see Denise shaking her head because as a councillor, then she would have had to approve it. Um, but that movie, that money, and, and I remember back then, we were kind of working under the assumption that they should get about a third of it. And so they found a project, Mr. Terry Wigan, when he was business manager. Um, and it is to do with the studio that they have at the high school. And that was financed from cable money, and that was, uh, our effort to, uh, share in the bounty. Because, uh, I don't know legally, but the, the spirit of it is that the school is one-third of the P E chief formulaic. So they got about one-third, uh, of our capital money from the last contract. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, that's interesting.
Okay, thank you. Uh, anybody else wish to be heard this evening? Uh, Mr. Catrona, Councilor Catrona.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Thank you, Mr. Town Manager. Um, for everybody that's been negotiating the license renewal. Questions, thoughts, comments, and, and I certainly do feel the pain of Helen Boyle. During this license renewal, was there a conversation in reference to bringing the office back to town?
So, um, a couple of things. So, um, a couple of things. I want, this is really the public hearing to make comments about cable, so I'll, I'll try and answer that in brief, but I want to stick to taking the input about the concerns. But we, the, we've started the initiation with Charter. We have not sat down face-to-face. This is part of the ascertainment and the collection of, of our financial needs, capital needs, and the quality of service issues and the programming issues that we intend to bring back. So, um, it has been mentioned on numerous occasions at council meetings, here this evening, in my discussions with others, that people would like to see, um, a cable office brought back here. Uh, it may be outside the scope of what the cable license focuses on, but I don't think it's outside of the scope of us having a, a reasonable conversation. So it is a point that's been duly noted, and I have mentioned it to our, our cable council.
Thank you. Again, I, I feel for Helen and many other people. I thought tonight would be flooded with, with, um, participants, and I'm, I'm kind of surprised to see not more, not more residents and taxpayers, um, participating in tonight's meeting, because I also receive many phone calls, and I just defer them to cable. Um, so, you know, we know prices go up, the quality of service goes down. We ourselves here have the same issues as everyone else in town. Um, and don't feel that they should be, a simple phone call to the town manager, a simple phone call to Southbridge Community TV, should be documentation enough for a Southbridge resident or taxpayer. So I believe there are choices, um, in town. I know we have Dish, DirecTV, Spectrum, Chip Norton, um, the conference center, there's FiOS going up to the conference center. Maybe we need to start talking to some of these other providers and see what they can do for Southbridge. I, I, I don't feel strongly at all that, that this contract or this renewal, license renewal should be renewed. I think we should send a clear message to Spectrum now that there's, there's just issues in this town, there's needs, and they need to be fixed. But we'll talk about, uh, we'll, we'll be discussing this more, I know, under capital and when the term budget season. Thank you.
Thank you, Brian. Is there anybody else, um, that wishes to be heard? Ms. Clemens?
Thank you. Um, so a couple of things left on my list of, um, to be noted to make sure for this, for this renewal process. Uh, it has been a number of years, three to five, somewhere in there, in which the, in our contract, we have four drops, which are supposed to be able to, um, that they provided in the original contract, that we're supposed to be able to provide live feed, um, and be a resource, uh, of, for programming, and that included the library. As some of you recall, that there used to be meetings at the library at times in the summer, when there were complaints of too much heat in the town hall, the council would tend to move over to the piape room. Um, and that dropped, uh, in my investigation and speaking with our Director Margaret Morrissey and others, uh, it kind of dropped one day and was no longer available. And the, um, information, all the information she ever got was that, uh, they weren't able to provide it anymore. They had done some reconfiguring of things, and they weren't able to provide it anymore to the library. However, that is one of the absolute, which stated of four that are listed. And I'll point out, the contract before actually lists, has, I'll, I'll bring that up to the town manager, but, um, in the contract before specifies the four absolutes, which were the old town, the old high school, the new high school, once it was built on Torrey Road, the library and the town hall. Those were specific. Um, I'm not quite sure the name of it, Max would know, in terms of, I can't remember the, um, what they're called, where you can, where you could send signal, and it would go uploaded and then be downloaded or whatever to the, to all the cable users who wanted.
I believe there are origination sites, I think.
Yeah, origination sites, yeah. Too many, not, too many things in my head right now, but, um, so, so, anyway, that is, that is a big concern of mine in reading through the contract. Um, and again, investigating as to where and how that happened, um, without really any notice. I will state that, uh, there is, to Mr. Marquetti's point earlier, uh, section 5.5 on page 17, notification of rates and charges, the licensee is, uh, shall, not, and shall according to the definitions is mandatory, inform the issuing authority of all, uh, rate and charges, you know, everything that increases. So there is a segment in there. I do know that that has been on occasion at council meetings. I can remember at least Chris Clark commenting about rates changing. Has it been done since? I'm not so sure. Um, and Ms. McCall probably hasn't been here long enough to get a note to make that under, under, um, uh, town manager announcements at this point. So I know I've heard town managers comment on rate increases, but again, very, uh, limited to that, to that point, Mr. Marquetti. Um, I'm trying to think what else here, mostly that the four, that was, that's really concerning. I'll also point out, there was an issue just last year, and again, even with our own cable television, um, our station was out for six weeks, our, our signal. And, you know, they were putting in other line for the YMCA and other places and told them that's why they had to, uh, you know, that we had problems. Well, that's just not acceptable. And hopefully going forward, it won't be acceptable. As to Councilor Catrona's comment of not renewal, I think we can make it difficult, but it certainly will be even more difficult to just, to cut complete ties and not be able to, um, have any service for the 3,998 subscribers at this point. So that might be an unrealistic, unrealistic option. Again, we're, they're kind of in that monopoly state, um, but certainly we can make them comply with all the Ts and the Is in this contract, uh, in this license, excuse me. Let's be clear, it is a license under the purview of the issuing authority, which is the town manager. So, um, there are other concerns, which I've brought to the town manager's, uh, uh, notice, and I'm sure people follow through in the negotiations on that, but, um, we're in a rock and a hard place, people. Oh, one more thing, um, education-wise, I did, I have spoken with Max and Jim in terms of them being able to put programming on. Just because we have an access community studio doesn't mean they're the only people who can, who can actually make content. So this is out to all you people out there, you can make content, you can provide it for the Southbridge Community Access Studio, and if it meets the criteria to go on, which is quite broad, then you can have things on. If you've got an educational programming kind of situation, whether it's cooking or whether it's schoolchildren, high schoolers who have a penchant for being producers, that content can be put on. And I've encouraged, you know, we're having that conversation, if we can't get this Mr. Mather's to put stuff on, then, you know, it is possible that it can be directly put on through, through the main office. So those are things, it's not like we're just saying, oh, too bad, it's black. There are, there are legitimate concerns that have been discussed, um, on that too, so, just recently. Thank you.
Okay, I'm not sure who put their hand up first, whether it was Ms. Boyle or not, but let me take Ms. Boyle's comments and remind you that this is for the public hearing for, for comment, um, for the purpose of ascertaining, uh, quality of service as well as needs.
Just a quick question, but, um, Councilor Joe Contra left. How does FiOS, how does the, the hotel get FiOS when I call and we get told it's no long, it's not available in our, in our town? How is that possible?
So, I'd find out, you know, I, I, I've been asked this question, I, I'm making, making attempts to get ahold of somebody at a, at a govern, local government level within Verizon to respond. I've looked at the cable coverage maps, uh, they don't come this far. It could be that, and this is pure speculation, that, um, Mr. Norton and the conference center has on their own secured, uh, paid for it. I, I, I don't know, I would have to look into that. But to the point that Ms. Clemens made earlier, one of the, the hurdles to getting other providers to come in is to, uh, do the build-out of the infrastructure for them to run the, their cable or the, or the fiber on the lines. And they have to make a business decision as to whether or not that is in their best interest to spend the money in hopes to entice enough people, uh, to come over. So I think what you find in some communities, it's a purely business decision that some of these people put the lines out back in the 80s, when cable television was first, um, expanding throughout the Commonwealth. They have it, they're able to take advantage of that for internet, and because they were here here first, and they have the wires on the pole, it makes it very difficult for another provider to come into the area to spend all the money to get it out through all the city, you know, the cities, streets and towns on, and then hope to lure people in. But that doesn't mean we cannot ask, because as was pointed out earlier, it's not an exclusive license. But I think it boils down to business decisions at the end of the day. And again, that's, that's my, uh, personal opinion, but we will continue to see if we can find out if anybody would like to come in. I know Counselor Steves has asked before at council meetings, could we try and reach out to Verizon? We're, we're still trying to get some, some input from them, so, thank you. I think Mr. Marquetti had his hand up, then Jim Cosgrove, and then Counselor Steves.
Uh, thank you, uh, Mr. Manager. As I said, the educational channel is not a matter of no programming on there, the signal is, is down, it's just down. It says it's black, no video input, and then there's some numbers running. And this happens quite, quite often, so I don't know what the problem with that is. But like I said, if we're paying for it, I feel we should have it. The, the other thing that I just wanted to, um, restate is that I, my personal experience with Charter, I have not had a problem with them. However, I have an Ethernet cable direct, directly into the modem, and that's made a difference for me. My speeds are quite high. My wife does have a little problems, a little slow. I've thought of trying one of those mesh systems where you, or moving the modem closer, because sometimes walls can, can stop, uh, signals passing through Wi-Fi signals. So I've thought of doing that or moving the modem. A mesh, a mesh system, it can get a little expensive, and I'm certainly, I'm not a Wi-Fi expert, so I don't even know if I'd, if I would know how to hook that up. But anyways, that's all I wanted to say. Thank you.
Mr. Cosgrove, did you have something to add?
Yeah, just, uh, mentioning again that they are working on that school channel. But as, as I mentioned to, uh, Ms. Clemens, the same thing that they're running into, you know, he's had some setbacks, and now he's going to be out for another three weeks, but we are working on getting that channel back up and running. I spoke with Mr. Mather, as I said, he, he came up here to borrow some equipment to work on that. And he, uh, you know, they are trying to get the channel going, and he did mention it, it would be a great, great, um, thing for the children, that, you know, the students to be able to use. If some, some students won't have a computer at home, and it might be more of useful for them to watch a class or something like that on Channel 191, if we can get that going. It's just unfortunate that we've, he's been running into all these setbacks with the, uh, the beginning, at the beginning, the part of the problem was, I guess, the IT folks over at the high school were very busy with, um, getting the iPads for the students. They're refurbishing them and getting, getting them out to the students, and that was an ongoing issue. And then, as I said, he's had other problems over there, but we will, we will get that channel going.
All right, thank you. Okay, um, I have, I have Counsel, I have Counselor Steves, and then if there's anybody else afterwards that has anything new to say, I'd like to hear from them. Uh, Counselor Steves?
Um, thank you, Mr. McCall. I actually just wanted to respond to what you said a second ago about me. Um, because I, I, in the past, I have referred to, um, expanding our, what we have available as far as people who can come into town, but I've also would love to see if we can work out some way, if possible, and granted, this would be, probably require a lot of research and a significant amount of money to do about, to do municipally-owned cable. Because ultimately, I think public, public ownership of the cable system is the underlying solution to most of these problems. Because we don't have, you don't have monopoly if the public owns it. And we can control what's going on, how it gets broadcast, um, what the service, the service requirements are, how things get, how frequently things get fixed and that kind of stuff. And I realize I'm just kind of on a soapbox at the moment, but I just want, it, since you mentioned it, I just wanted to, to mention it. I know I've mentioned it in the past. And it's, it's not something I realize it can probably be negotiated into a contract like this, because by definition, it's contrary to what their business model is. But I personally think that's the ultimate solution, is public ownership. Thanks.
Okay, and again, I want to stay on the license and the issues with, um, Charter. Is there anybody else who has anything they'd like to add new? I saw Patrick Hurley's microphone go on. Mr. Hurley, are you looking to make a comment?
Uh, yes, I am. Yeah, I've been living in Southbridge about 16 years. Uh, I'm a software engineer and, uh, live and die with the internet connection. In general, with Charter, the, the cable, uh, I don't have any real problems with that. I think the, the content of what they have for broadcasting, uh, overall is fairly good. I think when you start to cut the cord or the ways to get content, that's where the internet becomes a bigger issue. And I think getting the word out on Facebook or letting people know that they shouldn't, you know, have any complaints in writing or email would be helpful. I didn't know that, I was working directly with Charter. I have gigabit internet, I have everything in the house, wired cat six for, for, uh, performance, and still during this call, uh, people would clip or hit sound robotic. There's, you know, it's been remarkable overall how we've weathered the, the change to using the internet for Zoom for almost everything. And, you know, I think, again, overall, they've done a good job, but there's still some underlying quality of service issues that I, I think we've all touched on a, a bunch of times. To get a stronger voice, I, I think, you know, letting people know to put it in writing, that would be helpful, then you guys have the ammunition to go to Charter with. Um, the other thing too is, these agreements are, you know, negotiated by each, each town or city. Is there any thought of getting together with neighboring, uh, communities, having a stronger voice if they collectively, uh, talk to Charter or Spectrum or see what's there? Uh, I'm sure they have different renewal cycles and no different leverage, but I, I just think a stronger voice could be made collectively.
Okay, thank you for your input, Mr. Hurley. Anybody else wish to speak this evening? Being and hearing no one else that is looking to speak, then I am going to close, uh, the public hearing. I would also just say, enter into the record that pursuant to the requirements of the FCC, this notification that I read at the beginning was posted here in the town hall, it was published, uh, as required, two times, uh, per the timeline in the local newspapers, and we've been running the notification on the cable, uh, peg access bulletin board to make sure that we could reach as many people, and we've talked about it at the, uh, the town council meetings, hoping that we would get people to come here this evening. Um, I appreciate everybody taking the time out this evening to come, uh, to share their thoughts on Charter, the quality of service, the, the assessment of needs, um, and what they think we should be doing, uh, as we go forward and sit down with them. And I, I again, thank, uh, the staff at Southbridge Community Television for the wonderful video they put together, um, and the programming that they provide the community, uh, the cable access, uh, excuse me, the Cable Advisory Committee, Ms. Clemens, for all the hard work she's doing, and all the citizens that, uh, came here this evening and provided their valuable input. And assuming there is no further, uh, questions or comments, I'm going to terminate the, the recording, and I would wish you all a good evening. And again, thank you for your input, and it'll be duly noted, and we will document it. Thank you.